One thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-seven cents by weekly effective August twenty-ninth.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept those changes. Any questions or comments? Now, in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same sign. So ordered.
Under other transactions, I have a motion to approve Michael Anderson, Chief Clerk of Voter Registration's request to create a temporary casual clerk position on grade fourteen, step one, on the non-union salary chart effective September sixth through December second, two thousand sixteen, and all other voter registration employees to work an additional five hours per week, not to exceed forty hours per week, effective September nineteenth through November eighteenth, two thousand sixteen.
Make a motion to approve the voter request.
Second.
That was grade four.
Grade four, step one, for you.
Your help. Any questions on the motion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. So moved. Thank you.
President Judge Jawach would like to hire Kathy Melville as a county clerk seat at the rate of eight hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-two cents by weekly effective September sixth. The prison would like to hire Teresa Bartlett as a part-time LPN at the rate of sixteen dollars and eighty-three cents per hour effective September fifth. The prison would like to hire Danielle Riddle as a part-time LPN at the rate of sixteen dollars and eighty-three cents per hour effective September fifth. And voter registration would like to hire Ann Dalberg for the temporary casual clerk position at the rate of ten dollars and three cents per hour effective September sixth.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept those transactions. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. So moved.
Moving on to salary board. Motion to approve all transactions previously read plus the following. Michelle Williams, incremental increase, full-time correctional officer at the prison to the rate of seventeen dollars and fifty cents per hour effective September eleventh. Wesley Bankus, incremental increase, full-time correctional officer at the prison to the rate of thirteen dollars and eighty-two cents per hour effective September eleventh. Noah Mills, incremental increase, full-time correctional officer at the prison to the rate of thirteen dollars and eighty-two cents per hour effective September twenty-fifth.
Second. As we move in second, that we approve the salary board. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close same sign. So moved.
Moving on to conference seminar request. Mandated Cody Reese, Amanda Boyer from probation services would like to attend the firearms training in Harrisburg, September thirteenth through sixteenth. Meals reimbursement, forty-nine credits mandated by the FDCC. Christine Burris from Children and Youth would like to attend the foundations of leadership in the camps for September seventh and eighth. Mileage meals and tools reimbursement, twelve credits mandated by DHS. Susan Christner, Dwight Penber, and Ryan Weber from probation services would like to attend the refusal skills and a relaxed perspective in Mechanicsburg, September twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. Three hundred and thirty dollar total registration fees, meals reimbursement, nine credits mandated by JCJC. Dr. Jeffrey Yokum, Doug Levy, Joe Devits, Devits, Greg Buck, and Janet Bradley from the coroner's office would like to attend the DUCC Awareness Project in Shippensburg, September twenty-ninth. Four hundred dollar total registration fee, four credits mandated by the Act Twenty-two of nineteen eighty-eight. Nicole Roila and Maria Berandes, Mark Herr, Tori Garber. Children and Youth employees, and Tori is a student intern, would like to attend the basic catch training for Central Region in Mechanicsburg, September ninth. Mileage meals and tools reimbursement, five credits mandated by DHS. No, Aguilera Gonzalez from probation services would like to attend the orientation for the new juvenile probation professional in Camp Hill, September nineteenth through the twenty-third. Three hundred and fifty dollar total registration fee, meals reimbursement, sixty credits mandated by JCJC. John Wilson, Brian Burke, and Carl Wensler from EMA would like to attend the two thousand sixteen NENA Keystone State Conference in State College, September fourteenth through sixteenth. Three hundred dollar total registration fees, lodging and meals reimbursement mandated by PDA. Pam Smith will be replacing Terry Pildebrand, who was previously approved to attend the National Adult Protective Services Association Annual Conference. This is for area agencies aging in Philadelphia. August twenty-ninth, thirtieth, and thirty-first, lodging, mileage, meals, parking, and tools reimbursement mandated by PDA, and Pam will be replacing Terry.
Seek a motion. So moved.
I'll second. I do have a question. The fourth block down, the last name, should it be Janet Bradley?
I'm not, I don't think so.
I think so.
She's the first lead.
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second to approve the mandated seminar requests. Any question further? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. So moved.
Under request, David Mendez from ITS would like to attend the CCAP cybersecurity forum in Harrisburg, October seventeenth, mileage reimbursement.
So moved.
Second. We move in second that we approve the IT request. Any questions? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. So moved.
Danielle Haug from ITS would like to attend the CCAP IT quarterly and security meetings in Harrisburg, September twelfth through thirteenth, mileage reimbursement.
Make a motion for the IT director to attend the CCAP workshop.
Second.
As we move in seconded, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. So ordered.
Barb Smith, Deb Rothermell, and Wanda Warner from the coroner's office would like to attend PA Protection Orders in Harrisburg, September forty-eighth, mileage reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
We move in seconded that we approve that request. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. So moved.
Kiamari Cancel and Sarah Hazen from MDJ Disser's office would like to attend the two thousand sixteen MDJS workshop in Lancaster, November eighteenth. No further reimbursement needed.
Make a motion for the folks to attend the MDJ workshop.
Second.
As we move in seconded, any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. So moved.
Sandy Long, Ruth Snyder, Nelson Swivak, Lillian Morales, and Phyllis Holtry from Community Action Partnership would like to attend the Embracing Change Symposium in Harrisburg, September nineteenth, twentieth, twenty-first, twenty-second, mileage reimbursement.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second to approve that request. Questions? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. So ordered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Dana. Good morning. Reese. Please introduce and proceed. Daniel Seaman, Chief County Assessor for Lebanon County. I have one exemption request for a state veteran, and that's Donald J. Mitchell, sixteen, Green Breyer Drive, Myers. And that's for two thousand and seven.
Make a motion to accept the veteran exemption as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept Chief Assessor's recommendation. Any questions? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. So moved. Thank you.
First, I've got a little few more requests from West Cornwall Township. They would like to use their income for replacement of signs around the township at a cost of three thousand fifty-one dollars and sixty-two cents. Their act fixed allocation would be one thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine.
One thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine. Thank you.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second to accept that distribution. Any questions on that? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. So moved.
I have some contracts for drivers with the Community Action Partnership for the Medical Assistance Transportation Program. First one being for Rafael Rodriguez to be a driver effective through six-thirty to seventeen. And also for...
Christine. Pardon? Christine Hartman?
Yeah.
Want this one?
Oh, no, that Christine's our financial officer. That's the signature.
Oh, okay. That's the name I saw there.
Yeah, so I, okay, I just have the one for Rafael Rodriguez.
Make a motion. Motion to accept Rafael Rodriguez as a driver.
Second.
So moved in seconded. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. So moved.
I have some contracts for drivers with the Community Action Partnership for the Medical Assistance Transportation Program. First one being for Rafael Rodriguez to be a driver effective through six-thirty to seventeen. And also for...
Christine. Pardon? Christine Hartman?
Yeah.
Want this one?
Sure. Oh, no, that Christine's our financial officer. That's the signature.
Oh, okay. That's the name I saw there.
Yeah, so I, okay, I just have the one for Rafael Rodriguez.
Make a motion. Motion to accept Rafael Rodriguez as a driver.
Second.
So moved in seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. So moved.
Okay, then I have two items related to the MATP program, first being the one, first being the wrap-up report for fifteen, fifteen sixteen year ending June thirtieth. And that is a report to Department of Human Services that during the fifteen sixteen year, the Medical Assistance Transportation Program provided seventy-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-four trips to one thousand twenty-three consumers at a cost of one million two hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. Would you are verification that we're the same.
So moved.
The heading or a second.
We have a motion and a second, and we need to divide the number of trips. I don't do that. I'm sure sometimes can be. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. So moved.
And for the year that we are presently in, the seven, one sixteen through six-thirty seventeen year, this is an assurance of compliance for the Medical Assistance Transportation Program. And that, the allocation for the sixteen seventeen program year is one million two hundred and sixty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars. It's a decrease of about a thousand dollars in the prior year. However, if it goes over that, Phyllis is able to apply for additional grants and money. So if you're okay on the compliance, no questions.
So moved.
One second. We approve the allocation for the cap. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. So moved.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, Chris. Mind introducing yourself for the folks, and we can...
Betsy Bowman, Executive Director of Lebanon County Development Authority.
The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. I'm here just for a couple items of business that relate to the county's community development grant program. As has been the most recent history here, is everything that we do now with the state has to be signed by the county because you are the grantees. So that's why we continue to bring new documents to sign. We would have two cooperation agreements, of which the county and the development authority are party to, as well as to the municipalities who are actually receiving the funding. The first one would be for Jones Town Borough. And that is for work that we have previously approved as part of the grant. And that would be to make two dugouts at the ball field handicap accessible, as well as constructing a handicap accessible walkway around the dugout areas as well. So it is, as I said, a previously approved activity, but we would need you to become a party to that agreement with Jones Town Borough. And then the second one is similar, and that is with Hamilton Township. And that is for the continuation of their curb and sidewalk program on West Queen Street. That was a multi-year activity, and this would be the final year that we would be funding that in all likelihood. And again, that was a previously approved activity, but we now have to have cooperation agreements signed between municipalities.
Same motion.
Make a motion to approve the two agreements as provided by...
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any questions on the motion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. So moved.
And then the second item of business would be a resolution, also for the community development grant. It would pertain to fiscal years two thousand eleven and two thousand fourteen. Two thousand eleven being old money. Again, we're not approving any additional activities, rather, we're switching our old money to the project that is ready to go now, which in this case would be Coria Borough who is doing the curb ramps. We're taking money away from Myers Town Borough because they will be doing curb ramps as well, but they're only going to be ready to go next summer. So rather than, we'd like to be able to use, we're supposed to use, the oldest money first so that we can close out projects in a timely manner. So again, neither of those communities are being shorted money. And then there was a small amount of money that was left over in a demolition project that was funded in the work of Lebanon Township. And we're putting that eighteen hundred and fifty-five dollars into the county's home fire program because that's an open activity that we do as well.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second to accept the resolution as presented. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. So moved.
Those are the county items of business. I did want to bring them to the commissioner's attention that we did receive notice from DCED that a disaster relief recovery application would not be funded for the county. They did have money left. If you remember, we had submitted an application, and it was a second round money that they, that the state allocated to projects that have already been underway to give them more assistance. There was additional funding, which we had a third round, which we would hold, we can apply for. And they've now chosen to continue to fund the programs that were funded in the first round. So there's no money. In some ways, five years after the event, we're not sure that we would have a good reception, if we have enough properties that we could acquire for that program. But wanted to let you know that too.
So that was drop the story, Lee.
That was me.
Follow up to Lee.
And Irene.
Very good. Thank you, Senator.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Hello.
Good morning. Good morning. Welcome. How do you start by introducing yourselves and maybe your associates?
I'm Kevin Fromm. I'm the administrator of Lebanon County Mental Health and Living disabilities Early Prevention Program. And we have with us today a number of the members of the Lebanon County Suicide Prevention Task Force, and I'll let them introduce themselves.
Good morning. I'm Holly Lakey, Director of Mental Health Services at Lebanon County MHD.
Nicholas Meyer, Director of casemanship services at MHD.
Good morning. My name is Mike Ritter. I'm the Public Education Coordinator with Domestic Violence Intervention of Lebanon County.
Good morning. I'm Brooke Smith. I'm the Director of Community Impact with the United Way of Lebanon County.
Alyssa Cockle, Community Relations and Domestic Suicide Education.
I'm Monica Boyer, I'm Consultation Education Coordinator with Lebanon County MHD.
Thank you.
This is only a portion of the task force. It's a very large group of people from various backgrounds who have joined together as a group to try and have a positive impact on the suicide issue here in Lebanon County. We've worked for a number of years to try and make a difference here. When we looked at suicide rates and the increasing suicide rates, not only in Lebanon County, but in, across the state, across the nation, it's becoming very alarming. And back in two thousand thirteen, we had, we had peaked in terms of the number of suicides. In two thousand twelve, we had fifteen, and in two thousand thirteen, that number jumped to twenty-six, which was very alarming. So this group has been working for several years to try and impact that, and we believe the group is having a positive effect in our community. After the peak of twenty-six suicides in two thousand thirteen, the following year, in two thousand fourteen, we had twenty suicides. And last year, in two thousand fifteen, that number was down to thirteen, which was half of what it was two years earlier. Although it's, it's never fully known as to why the rates go up and down, we believe that the efforts of this group have had an impact. Everybody's working together and working hard to make a difference here. This group is responsible for a number of initiatives in the county, and Holly will give you a brief summary of the things that are going on, not only through suicide prevention awareness month, but throughout the years.
Well, I must say that it's really my pleasure to work with the task force on the issue of suicide prevention. We have an amazing group of individuals who are hard workers and really invested in prevention of suicide within our community. So we work actively all year long. Over the past year, we've had numerous projects that we have accomplished through a partnership with Perform Care, which is our mandatory organization. We developed several different tactics and accomplished those. The first was to develop a logo for the task force to actually identify who we are. So even though we've been in existence for almost eleven years now, we never really had a logo that was unique to our task force and identified us as a team of individuals. So through that partnership, we not only created the logo, but then we were able to update our resource cards. So our resource card is having a logo, but then also we have a new website, which is great. That's a partnership with the Community Health Council of Lebanon County. And through that, we were able to update that website and put a lot of really useful information on that. The Phil Human Marketing Department is also helping us with that website to further develop not only the appearance and content of that website. So these are new, and we would like to get those out into the community, so I'll upload parcels around and you can see why we're beneficial to you. Also, through that partnership with Perform Care, again, we were able to send two individuals to training to become instructors for Lebanon County. That training is on QPR, which is Question, Persuade, Refer, Suicide Prevention Training. So those are two individuals that are instructors and able to train classes here in Lebanon County as needed. And that's really a great partnership. We're pleased to be able to offer that to the community and to those two individuals who are willingly given their time. So throughout the year, those trainings will be offered on a quarterly basis. And then also, for Perform Care, we were able to develop, and they sponsor on the purchase of fans for the community. So they do have a... And for that, it includes a text number. So if someone is in crisis, they can text that number, as well as our local Lebanon County crisis workers. So there's a lot of useful information on these, and if you're interested, send those around as well. I will also say that as September approaches, September is something that we really like to develop all year long and in work on events. So we have a lot of things happening for the month of September and the suicide prevention month. And this, this was one of those, one of those days. But we have several trainings. We do have the QPR Suicide Prevention Training coming up this month. There's also a training offered on mental health, a first aid training. We also have a speaker coming, and that was a partnership through Wellsman that funded the speaker coming in. His name is Kevin Hines. Kevin Hines is actually one individual who, very rare, actually jumped from the Golden Gate Bridge. He's a survivor. So he's coming in from California, and I hope he's speaking on September twentieth, so that's something, something there in the community. As well as, the task force has developed a remembrance garden through a partnership with the city here. The mayor has given us a little plot of land behind the nature barn at Saber's Dam Park. And what we've done with that area is to create a garden with papers. And those papers include the names of individuals that the family members have shared their names and those who've been lost to suicide. So this will be a place where family members, loved ones will be able to go to really kind of look back, remember their lives, but also as they go through the grieving process, it will be a quiet place for them to really, really think about all of those things. So they've been working on that. There's a dedication ceremony for that coming up on September twenty-first at three o'clock. And then on September twenty-ninth, there will be a remembrance ceremony for individuals who have lost family members or loved ones to suicide. So that will be happening as well. All of those are listed on the flyer that's hanging around. And then finally, I know it's a lot, on September tenth is actual World Suicide Prevention Day. And on that day, we ask that if you're able and you're calm, if you provide a candle in your window, and what that does is signify your support for suicide prevention, as well as your support for those individuals in the community who have lost loved ones to suicide. So we really want to ensure that they feel supported and know that through all of us, that you're not alone. So we're here to...
So there are a number of things going on, and again, Perform Care has been a great partner. Wellsman has been a great partner. Phil Haven Center has been a great partner in terms of helping us put these things together and also helping the county. So there are a lot of things that are going on, a lot of great partners we have to address this issue. I don't know if anyone from the task force would add anything, give a great summary of all these folks, how they've been working, how they've worked very hard to accomplish all these things that the city's been working here today.
We appreciate all the various layers of awareness that you folks keep in front of the public. I mean, that's part of the, part of the answer is to give the people a place to find help and so on. I, if you don't mind, when you're giving the numbers from previous years, year-to-date, was there a number?
Yes, year-to-date is thirteen.
Oh, is that the thirteen?
Yes. So we've already matched last year's and we're hoping for some common dates for any of them.
Holly, you mentioned the papers. I'm curious, do the loved ones purchase those? Does your office purchase those? How do, who funds them?
I'm so glad you asked that question because the community has been very generous in donating all of the, not only the time to prepare this garden, but then all of the material has been donated by sponsors around the community. Lowe's, Home Depot. I could go on. There's a whole list of companies and businesses that have sponsored all of, all of these things. So those were sponsored by a local business here in the community, and so the loved ones, all of this is free to everyone in the community, and will be given back to the community for them to remember. So if you look at our website, you'll see a whole list of those who have contributed.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
Just appreciate, certainly appreciate the efforts and open praise. Kevin said that we have a long, quiet end in the year here.
Anything else?
Yeah, if you have a question, we'd like to have you listen to it and then adopt it.
Whereas suicide dramatically affects the residents of Lebanon County, and whereas every effort is being made to prevent a high rate of suicide among our citizens, and whereas Lebanon County supports community partners in their work to enhance mental well, mental well...
Holly, you mentioned the papers. I'm curious, do the loved ones purchase those? Does your office purchase those? How do you fund them?
I'm so glad you asked that question because the community has been very generous in donating all of the, not only the time to prepare this garden, but then all of the material has been donated by sponsors around the community. Lowe's, Home Depot. I could go on. There's a whole list of companies and businesses that have sponsored all of these things. So those were sponsored by a local business here in the community. And so the loved ones, all of this is free to everyone in the community. And will be given back to the community for them to remember. So if you look at our website, you'll see a whole list of those who have contributed.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Appreciate, certainly appreciate the efforts. Open pray, as Kevin said, that we have a long, quiet end in the year here.
Any other questions we'd like to have you listen to and then adopt?
Whereas suicide dramatically affects the residents of Lebanon County, and whereas every effort is being made to prevent a high rate of suicide among our citizens, and whereas Lebanon County supports community partners in their work to enhance mental wellness and recovery in our citizens. And whereas Lebanon County recognizes the efforts of the Lebanon County Suicide Prevention Task Force to prevent suicide by community-wide trainings and awareness efforts throughout the year, especially during this month of September. Now therefore, we, Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September is Suicide Prevention Month in Lebanon County.
Please motion and we adopt the proclamation.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, then we adopt the proclamation in recognition of Suicide Prevention Month. Any questions? If not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, so ordered.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's great.
Thank you.
He has his wide angle.
Thank you, appreciate your work.
Thanks, everybody.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you for everything you guys do.
Thank you for everything you do.
Really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you so much.
See you guys later.
Thank you.
Yeah, I gotta do this.
Thank you.
Your presence always makes me happy.
It is. The website direction is good enough. I mean, I don't know any specifics, I mean, I don't know.
Good morning. My name is Mr. Director of Children's Youth Services. With me this morning is Sally Berry, Chief of Propagation Services. To Kristner, Supervisor to Propagation, Deputy Director, sorry. We are here this morning... We are here this morning to present our implementation budget for fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, a needs-based budget for seventeen, eighteen, and to give you a report on how we ended up this year, nineteen, sixteen. For fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, we were certified an amount of seven million, two hundred, one thousand, two hundred seventy-six dollars, with a county share of one million, seven hundred sixty-four thousand, three hundred sixty-three dollars, which meant over spend of seven million, nine hundred eighty-three thousand, three hundred twenty-one dollars, with a county share of two million, five hundred sixty-one dollars, with a first, five hundred sixty-one thousand, three hundred seventy-seven dollars, which was an increase of seven hundred ninety-seven thousand, fourteen dollars in county share. Most of those increases were through Children's Youth Services. A result of five hundred twenty-six thousand, seven hundred twenty-five dollars in over expenditures due to our fair share pension fund, increased child abuse investigations and services associated with that, and some renovation costs. Juvenile probation was overspent, two hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred twenty dollars, which is due to increases in foster care and residential placements for sexual offenders, as well as placements for juvenile medical, mental health issues uncovered by Perform Care. I will and intend to file an appeal on the over expenditures for the county, successful, uh, with anticipated seeking five hundred seventy-six thousand, one hundred ninety-four dollars in additional revenue for the county. I'd also like to note that when we did the budget presentation last year, I was projecting a budget of eight million, four hundred sixty thousand, nine hundred fifty dollars, with county share of two million, seven hundred thirty-four thousand, nine hundred seventy-eight dollars. We actually meant four hundred seventy-seven thousand, six hundred twenty-nine dollars less than projected, and a hundred seventy-three thousand, six hundred one dollars less than projected in county share. For our implementation budget, the state certified us at eight million, five hundred fifty-four thousand, four hundred forty-eight dollars. However, based on actual expenditures, meeting with Sally Sue, Propagation, and Children's Youth expenditures, we are projecting a budget of eight million, two hundred twenty-five thousand, seven hundred eighty-four dollars, which is a decrease of three hundred twenty-eight thousand, six hundred sixty-four dollars under certified. The county share will go from two million, one hundred forty-nine thousand, six hundred sixty dollars to two million, one hundred fourteen thousand, one hundred seventy-four dollars, which is a decrease of thirty-five thousand, four hundred eighty-six dollars under certified, and more importantly, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred three dollars less than the county share of fiscal year eight thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Again, I met with Sally and Sue, and I think that their expenditures and our expenditures, we really feel that the eight point two million dollar figures are very realistic, admirable figure. Our needs-based budget request is for eight million, two hundred fifty-nine thousand, three hundred nineteen dollars, which is thirty-three thousand, five hundred thirty-five dollars more than fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, which is an adjustment for anticipated salary increases, healthcare increases, and some adjustments for anticipated rate increases for providers. The county share will be one million, nine hundred ninety-three thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars, which is a hundred twenty thousand, six hundred seventy-nine dollars less than fiscal year sixteen, seventeen. And obviously, that is based on the assumption that we will get all our Act One Forty-eight money, which we typically have in the past. If both the implementation budget and needs-based budgets are physically sound, responsible, we would recommend that the board take it to the post.
I will make a motion, but I also have a question.
Yes, I'll say.
On the bottom of page one, you mentioned that you'll receive five hundred and seventy-six thousand to offset increases of seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand.
Correct.
Is that because we will also then be gaining reimbursement from the pension to make up the other part?
Correct. That's when you file an appeal, where it's roughly, you're asking the state to bring their share up to what it would have been or should have been at seven point nine, and it's roughly eighty percent of the county share.
I just was thinking that was what it was, but I wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Jim, I just want to thank you on behalf of the board and the taxpayers of Lebanon County for the really great effort that you put into the budget process time after time and trying to look out for our best interest. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm struck by the scope of the budget. For a small county, these are big numbers, but you're dealing with probably the toughest jobs that society has to offer and doing it well. We really appreciate all, I know it takes a toll on our employees, and you're dealing with the issues that you folks deal with. It costs a lot to, you know, to help people and get through these things. But I do appreciate the professionalism that you guys bring to the table. So we have a motion and a second. Any other questions for the folks here today?
Yes, Jim. The, so how, have the investigations, child abuse investigations, and the way from the San Vesci, the changes to the San Vesci laws and so on, have they leveled? Did you see a spike and a decrease? Or, I know you had some people...
We haven't seen a decrease.
Okay.
They opened a major spike, and they had to kind of level off for a while.
At the, at the high?
But at the high level, now we're noticing it's starting to level up a little bit. We anticipated that they would kind of level off over the summer, which is what happens and toward the end of the summer, that it would start to level up.
Is that because school's back in session, and some of the mandated courses?
Well, it's at the end of summer, you know, it's warm and a couple of other tendencies there with parents. And so there's typically, and obviously, an increase in how school has started. Now we'll see another increase, but hopefully it's not going to be substantially higher than what it was last year because we're already...
And you did staff up a little bit as we moved stairs?
We're, we're, I was going to say, even as if we wanted additional staff. And I, I, you know, excellent staff right now, five child abuse investigators. We've got a superb job and certainly able to handle any additional increases that may occur. And I appreciate the commission. So our commissioners have provided the space for it.
I would also like to thank the commissioners for their support of our Juvenile Day Treatment Program and the contracts, such as the DIAKIND SPIN contract for our community-based sex offender programming, as well as the MST Multi-Systemic Therapy Programming Contract that was approved. Without those community-based programs, we would not have been able to reduce our placement numbers over the last year or so. I want to thank you for your support in these areas.
Thank you. I greatly appreciate it.
Oops, sorry.
Jim, I'm struck by the reduction in county share over the years of twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. And I think you talked a little bit about that as far as reimbursement for pension and things like that. And I guess Sally mentioned a little bit about reduction of some of the placements. But still, that's a, that's a breathtaking reduction. Could you discuss more in depth of exactly why there is?
Why there's such a reduction?
Yes.
It's based on your, on your budget, and the higher the budget, the more Act One Forty-eight state reimbursement you receive. And if you're aggregating the budget and not over budget, you get more state reimbursement and that, that offsets the county share. Where the county share takes a hit is when you over budget Act One Forty-eight, but it's not having inquiries, which is why they had to file an appeal, and so your county share goes up. So it's based on the amount of Act One Forty-eight reimbursement that you receive based on the budget approved or certified?
From a program perspective, for the delinquency part of it, we have seen, we're still, there are still kids that we still have to place, but we can't undervalue the importance of having community-based program. Three years ago, two years ago, we didn't have the programs that we needed for sex offenders and high-risk, high, medium, high-risk kids, and we had to send them out to placement. We have worked diligently at trying to establish programs within the community so that we can, A, send kids to the community-based program as opposed to sending them away to placement, which are far away and costly. And two, that we had programs that, once the, the, the primary treatment issues are dealt with for the kids, we can bring them back as a step-down program to our day treatment program, or to the SPIN program. So there, you can't undervalue the importance of those programs in our community.
And this last year is a result of the program of availability and our use of risk and needs assessment. We actually decreased our days of care in both juvenile detention and secure residential. So that was huge for the Juvenile Probation Department and the Juvenile Court because through our investment in some of these community-based services and risk needs assessment initiatives, we're now starting to see the fruits of that, of our labor. And we're seeing where we spent some money in the front, but now we're starting to save it on the back end, and that's been very important.
So could you put that in terms of numbers when you talk about offenders, I guess especially for sexual offenses that you have had to send out and are now able to care through these community-based programs?
Probably about two years ago, roughly, I'd say ninety percent of our sex offenders, because we didn't have community-based services, were being sent out for residential treatment. Right now, we're probably at about fifty percent. And the fifty percent that are in residential treatment are the ones that through evaluation, psychosexual evaluations have been determined to be high-risk and predatory to reoffend. So the kids that we can treat within the community, we are, and we're really isolating those that cause a risk to our community and need to be in either staff-secure or physically-secure environment.
I think you were...
I guess I would only go beyond that. I mean, can you give a ballpark number? Are we talking dozens?
I can tell you that we fluctuate anywhere between twenty to thirty sexual offenders that are active on a monthly basis. I can say, I believe right now, we have about twenty-five, and I think twelve of those are in residential placement. The rest, we've been able to maintain through intensive community-based programs. When you look at the cost of residential placement for sex offenders, we're talking anywhere between two fifty to three hundred dollars a day per child in care. So the savings of being able to keep them at home, especially through the use of our SPIN program that is one hundred percent funded through Perform Care dollars, I mean, we're saving the county thousands, so.
Any else?
I guess just briefly, the daycare that the youth advocate program, correct? Is that, is that meeting expectations? Do you see that going forward with yours?
That's been a very successful program with us. We have a very collaborative relationship. It is definitely a joint effort between our department and the youth advocate program. It's been evolving over the last two and a half years. So where we started is not where we're at now, but many good programs does that. We've looked at our successes and we've forwarded them, and we've looked at challenges and tried to make some modifications in those areas. The, the use of that program as a step-down program is something that's been for us. So we're hoping to continue to see success in that area, that we can actually bring kids home from placement facilities earlier than what we would have normally brought them home because we have this continued program with that, with the day treatment.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Can we take the implementation and the needs-based of the same motion? Or do you want to separate? It's your pleasure.
How about separate?
Okay, we'll do the implementation budget also, if that's what the motion is for. Any question?
We have a motion?
Yes.
Yep. Any questions further? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, so moved. And then I'll seek a motion for the needs-based.
Make a motion to approve the needs-based budget that's presented.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Further questions? If not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, so ordered. Thank you. Thank you. Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
You may proceed if you'd like to introduce yourself or your colleague.
My name's Jim Dunmoore. I'm the Executive Director of Lebanon County Commission on Drug and Alcohol Abuse. With me today, I have Samantha Lightka. She is an intern in our office for this school semester.
From what school?
Aubrey University.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to be next to Jim today, though.
Gave her the middle seat. This is my favorite seat.
Well, I noticed that you're a creature of habit.
Okay, I'm here today to review contract amendments. I have two contract amendments for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. I have one for the advanced treatment systems, that's the methanol clinic. And also I have one for White Deer Run, which is their new perspectives, the campus side of things. The reason I'm here today is... Uh, the reason I'm here today is, uh, if you recall, we received some money from the governor, an amount of twenty-seven thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars to the county for the heroin epidemic, and part of that money we used at these two facilities, uh, to make improvements at our facilities. Uh, so you'll see on the contract, the new contract total, it was a one-time expense for last year, uh, forty-nine hundred dollars, uh, we provided to the Leaven Treatment Center for them to do improvements at the methanol clinic, and below that, you'll see forty-two hundred and eighty-five dollars, we provided to New Perspectives, which is the rehab detox side out there at the campus, and they fixed up the farm, they did improvements at the farm. So some of the improvements were, uh, much overdue, and we were in a position this year to help them financially, our office, so that's what we did. So I would ask that you approve two thousand fifteen, sixteen contract amendments as presented.
Second?
It's been moved in second, that we approve those, uh, contract amendments. Any questions?
I have more.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have procedural things, Jim.
I did have a question, I want to ask on that. Uh, neither, neither one of those facilities are county-owned, is that correct?
They're both county.
We own the campus provider. Lives there. Okay. Cause I, I, I mean, I, obviously I knew they're.
So the campus and buildings are ours.
Parking issues are ours.
Yeah.
What else? If not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign, so ordered.
I'm also here to talk about fiscal year two thousand sixteen and seventeen contract amendments. Couple of reasons why I'm here, uh, I just presented these not too long ago, the two thousand sixteen, seventeen contract amendments. Uh, we had some additions that we would like to add to, you know, add contracts, uh, provide in our office with more resources. Uh, I'm sure everybody's aware of the, uh, capacity issue across the state when it comes to funding detox beds and rehab beds. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to expand our resources. So if you look at the first page, uh, Pyramid Healthcare, uh, Facility, we're adding two facilities, one is named Billside, and the other one is named Tradition House. Billside is a co-occurring short-term rehab program, and the Tradition House is a halfway house. So these would be two brand-new contracts for us to utilize if need be. Uh, underneath there, the provider Fire Tree, the facility is Conawaygo Snyder. We are adding short-term rehab, co-occurring short-term rehab, long-term rehab, and co-occurring long-term rehab. So we're adding those four services at Conawaygo Snyder in contract as such. On the back page, you'll see under provider Compass Mark, uh, the facility we just have listed as our prevention provider, there has been a change in the original total approved for them. Initially, we were approving one hundred and fifty-two thousand three hundred eighty as the total contract, and that contract has decreased by an amount of five hundred and eighty dollars. So the new contract total with them is one hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred dollars. Uh, and the other, the other, I pointed out the ones that we're adding, the other changes or amendments on the, these two sides of paper are due to counties have to enter these contracts into SDS. The county, like Leaven County's responsible for the Leaven County programs, so we enter the rates into, into the SDS system. Other counties, let's say in York County, Ransfield County, they have to enter their respective facilities in SDS. At the time that I came here with the, with the contracts, some of the counties did not do that, so they just went back and did it, so things changed, so we had to go back and change kind of a lot of things that we already did.
So the rate, the daily rate changed then because of that?
Not paid for the second page.
Where? Where? Daystar, White Deer?
No. They could have changed, no. It's like, for instance, Daystar, uh, the rates were published after the contracts were, like, we came here and got our contracts approved, and then they only put their rates in, so we had to go back and adjust. If the rates went up, we had to adjust, uh, if they stayed the same, that was fine. So not everybody met the SDS deadline for rates being in the system. We have to act, I mean, we met the deadline and we had a commissioner meeting, and, uh, have you guys approved the contract, and then other counties came, came late pretty much, made us go back and reduce.
Seek a motion for the sixteen, seventeen, uh, contract amendments.
Make a motion to adopt the, uh, contract.
Second?
It's been moved in second. Any questions? If not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Post same sign, so move. Anything else? Thank you. Good luck.
Looks like the IRS.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mark, before we proceed, thank you for distributing the information. Would you introduce yourself and, uh, you open there?
Mark Dunmore from Rensselaer [spelled phonetically] from the Center on the Audit, and we're here today to talk about the, uh, Financial Compliance Report for the year-end of December thirty-first of two thousand fifteen. With me is Nick Apel, he's the manager, he oversaw the day-to-day, uh, operations of the audit process as we go through this. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask. Uh, anytime if we don't have the answer on a fingertip, we'll just give it back to you. Thank you.
Very good.
So you should have in front of you, uh, the Financial Compliance Report. It's a thicker the report, so just really do it, uh, at a high level, and as you have questions and you want to get into more depth and detail, we'll certainly move into that. So if you turn to page two, that is the independent autograph report. There's a couple of things to note, uh, with the independent autograph report. The first section of the report indicates what year we're auditing and what funds, and of course, we're auditing the entire county, and it's for the year-end of December thirty-one, two thousand fifteen. The paragraph that is important to you, or one of the paragraphs that's important to you, is management's responsibility for the financial statement. And the county, uh, and its public officials have the overall responsibility for the financial statements and the fair presentation of the financial statements. Our responsibility is to look at the financial statements, compare those to generally accepted accounting principles for local governments, uh, look at how transactions are recorded and presented within the financial statements, and then issue our opinion on the financial statements. Our opinion is on the top of page three, uh, and of course, we're issuing a clean opinion on the financial statements, so we're not aware of any material in the statements, um, that needed to be corrected in order for them to be in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. There's a couple of other paragraphs out of that, after that, that relate to supplementary information. There's also a paragraph in there that relates to changes in accounting principles that affected primarily your pension and how that's presented, and we'll touch base more on pension presentation in a little bit. If you turn to page five, this is the management's discussion and analysis, and this is an area within the financial statement that Bob and his group, uh, have a lot of input in to what gets included. It's really an overview of the financial statements and talks about some financial statement highlights. So if you look at the top, and I'll try to reference this back to the individual financial statement, pages of the financial statements where it's presented. The governmental funds had a net fund balance of about twenty-two million dollars, and if you look back on page eighteen, I'll show you how that ties into the financial statement. When you flip back to page eighteen, all the way down here in the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see the twenty-two million dollars. That's where our time is linked to, and that's really all of your governmental funds. And what this statement does is look at the county operations really on a short-term basis, so this is looking at transactions that occurred, uh, at the county within the last two months, or after, two months after the year, let's pull back if it reflects to two thousand fifteen. We'll take a look and talk about the government-wide statements, which also issue, look at issues that are much broader and have a longer-term impact for the county. And if you go back to page five, that's the next statement we're going to talk about. If you look at the, the next bullet point, the total, the county's total net position increased by about six hundred thousand dollars, uh, to about three million one hundred and two thousand. That's, of course, significantly different from the first, uh, bullet point that we talked about. If you turn to page fourteen, you'll see again on the bottom right-hand corner of page fourteen, three million one hundred and two thousand dollars, and it's right about here. This statement takes a long-term look at your financial condition of, of the county. So from a long-term basis, when you look at all of the assets that the county has, and all of the liabilities that the county has, and you net them all down together, you have a positive position of about three point one million dollars. The first statement that we looked at that shows a net fund balance of twenty-two million dollars is a much shorter-term period, shorter time period, and that's, so those two have significant differences and tell you significant, um, information. So, short-term, strong financial position, strong cash flow. Longer-term, when you look out and project out, if everything's county-wide, significantly different, still strong financial position, you're in constant fund balance of three one one million dollars, but it gives you a different longer-term look of overall, of the overall strength of the county. Does that make sense?
It's good.
A little bit more on the county, oh, on page fourteen, when, when you look at that three million dollars, there are, um, different buckets within them. There's your investment in capital assets, the county building and all its facility, less debt, uh, that's a, that's about one point six million dollars, really as a debt and as a negative. Your debt exceeds the remaining basis, the unappreciated basis in the assets that you own. You have about three point six million dollars of restricted funds, and those are funds that are restricted, um, for specific uses within the county. And then you have unrestricted, uh, assets, and that's about one point one two, one billion one hundred thirty-three thousand. That's the portion of the fund balance that can be used for any purposes that the county sees. The net investment in capital assets can't be used, that's non-spendable because that's things like this building and your [inaudible 00:01:59]. Any questions on those at all? All right. Let's talk a little bit about the operations of the county and really what you look at from a, from the day-to-day and month-to-month basis, um, and the results of that. If you turn to page eighteen, this is, again, your fund balances and what, what happened on a short-term basis within your fund. Let's talk about the general fund, that's where most of the activity goes, and that's where most of the [inaudible 00:02:04]. So if you look on page eighteen, all the way down at the bottom of the page, on the bottom left-hand side, you'll see fund balance end of year, eighteen million eight hundred ninety-six thousand dollars. The number above that is the fund balance at the beginning of the year, the twenty-nine million seven hundred fifty-one thousand dollars, and then the net change in fund balance, the ten million eight hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars, is the change, the net income or net loss of the year, and your revenues are, um, are lower than your expenditures by that ten million eight hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars. Now, you had a one-time blip in there from an expenditure standpoint, and that was your ten million dollar contribution to the pension plan. So taking that out, your general fund showed a loss of about eight hundred fifty-four thousand on a short-term basis. Overall, the entity-wide or the county-wide, you have a, a net loss of about ten million three hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. Any questions on the general fund, the, the operations? Let's, let's move back two pages or four, to the front, rather, two pages to page sixteen. Page sixteen is your balance sheet, and it basically shows the assets and liabilities of your governmental funds on a short-term basis. So when we look at that, we talk about that, when you see things like taxes receivable net, eight hundred twenty-five dollars, thousand dollars. Any taxes that came in in January and February of two thousand sixteen that related back to two thousand fifteen were pulled back in and shown as a receivable net, so it's short-term. When you go down to the accounts payable on the pool, you'll see that four million four hundred six thousand dollars. Those are accounts payable or bills that were paid in January and February of two thousand sixteen that related to two thousand fifteen. We pulled back in, so again, shorter time period. So your total assets were about twenty-four million, uh, nine hundred thirty thousand dollars. Your liabilities were about six million dollars with some deferred inflows of resources, leaving you with a fund balance of about nineteen million dollars in the general fund. And then up, up above, you can see the, the categories, cash, and cash equivalents of about eleven point five million, the taxes receivable, about eight hundred twenty-five thousand, intergovernmental receivables, one point five million dollars, and due from other funds, about eleven million dollars, and then some smaller ones receivables, fifty-two thousand dollars, so your total assets were just shy of.
Mark, does the reimbursement that we are to get, isn't included into, or due from other funds, like for the pensions and things?
Well, as you, um, as you expense your pensions, that goes into the cost, and then it gets calculated into what those particular funding agencies will be in version. So when they look at your costs associated with that, um, it may not hit your bases until another two years.
So it's not there yet?
So if the general fund is paying the ten million dollars, they may allocate that over to the employees in a specific department or a specific fund. That wouldn't be set up as a due-to, due-from those funds, that's an expense of those funds as it relates specifically to the employees in that fund. It's a, it's an employee.
But there's no reimbursements in this number this year?
No, you wouldn't, you wouldn't record a receivable for that. The way you might recover some of those costs is in the, when the state, where the money is recanted or [inaudible 00:02:39].
I was just looking if there was any place I could go for the total number for the year of reimbursements.
No, and I don't even know that that would be able to be calculated because you don't know what your funding agencies will, will provide you.
They have pretty standard percentages.
Yeah, we have a non-essential mistake, but, so, and that, that.
So when it comes in, is that a windfall then? That, that would be additional income?
It wouldn't say it's a windfall, well, your income above, but your income is always based on [inaudible 00:03:00]. So they're not going to budget you to get this [inaudible 00:03:05]. And funds like your children, if children do, so if you look over at Children's View, um, and, let's look over at page eighteen, you're seeing why your MHS funds, your domestic relation funds, those are all zero balance funds, so you're going to recover some of that maybe through rates, um, but the general fund is always going to be funding those to bring them to zero, so there's always going to be some level of county general fund contribution [inaudible 00:03:59]. So there won't be. So there won't be, there won't be a windfall, that you'll have an extra $100,000 over the, over the cost. Does that make sense?
I think I'm hearing you saying we will have some additional funds come in.
Depending on the funding agency, they'll include it in their, their cost reimbursement calculations, but there's no, there's no guarantee which.
And it's not more than what the county put in.
Right.
Any other questions on the fund? Let's talk about some of the changes. The, the big change this year, of course, is your pension fund. Where are you wound up with that? I won't go into the other, but these are pretty standard. So let's go back to page 55. This really starts from the bulk of your, your pension plan footnotes. You have about 1,400 participants in the plan, last year you had a little bit over 1,540. The presentation of the financial statements is significantly different from prior years, there's changes if you look at this year. So page 55 really is a summary of active plan members and inactive plan members and those received benefits. When you get over to page 56, this is where kind of the meat of your pension plan source, how the formation within that is calculated. So things like an inflationary assumption at the top of page 56. They're assuming that you're going to have, inflation's going to be 3%, salary increases are going to be about 3.5%. And investment rates of return are going to be 7.5%. All of those assumptions impact your liability, your pension liability. And probably the biggest impact that is in there is in your investment rate of return. So they're assuming investment rate of return of 7.5%. If you turn over to page 57, and you look all the way down at the bottom, you'll see some pay, say 1% decrease, discount rate, and 1% increase. The middle column, the discount rate, 7.5%, has a number of $25,620,000 below that. That is your actuarially calculated unfunded pension liability at December 31, 2015, on all of those assumptions. If the actual results differ significantly from that, so let's say your investments actually turned 8.5%. Then your liability really is only $14 million. If your investments only make 6.5%, then your actual pension liability is $4 million. There's significant fluctuations that are caused by those investment assumptions. It's important to monitor those and make sure that your actual, your assumptions are correct. Now, you don't want to go and change your assumptions in the near future. Those are long-term assumptions over your life. If you turn back to page 61, it'll give you a little bit of idea on how things will fluctuate from one year to the next. So in 2014, your investments turned 8.2%, your assumption was 7.5%. In 2015, your investments had a net decrease of 2.64%. So you can't react in a panic from one year to the next, when assumptions change.
When you say decrease, is that from 7.5% or from 8.2%?
If you take the beginning value of your pension assets and you look at, let's say they were worth $100 at the beginning of the year, that same $100 really decreased down to about, like, 7.3% because of valuations in the stock market. If you looked at that same $100 today, the stock market has increased into almost at its all-time high. So you've recovered more, you probably recovered more than 2.6%. So.
So the starting point is, is not the percentage, the starting point is the value of the portfolio at the beginning of the year?
The change in that value from the beginning to the end.
But not from, yes, not from the 8.2 and not from the 7.5, but actually from the value?
It's not cumulative, it is that, it's a snapshot for that year, the results of those operations. And as we build this out, it's a question for 10 years. There's a little bit more detail, or there's a lot more detail, on your pension liabilities as they change over the years. So let's go back to page 57. So this chart here shows the increases and the decreases in your pension assets and liabilities throughout the year. So beginning of the year, you had, in the middle of the page, a total pension liability of $137 million. You had fiduciary claim assets, pension fund assets of about $109 million. So you had a net pension liability of about $27 million. As you go through the year, these are the other columns in here, other changes in those assets and liabilities. So at the beginning of the year, your liability was $27 million, the end of the year, your liability was about $25 million. Now, you made some significant contributions within the plan, but there was also some significant payments and benefits for employees. You put $10 million in, your retired employees pooled out $9.5 million in pension benefits, too. That was part of, the folks that retired and were drawing those funds out. So normally, your benefit payments, when you had the nursing home, or ran around $7 million a year, those are going to significantly decrease now that you don't have some of those employees in the company. One last item I want to point out from your pension, page 59. Again, a lot of information that I presented in the beginning of the session. If you look about two-thirds of the way down, you'll see again another presentation of your pension fund. Oh, page, yeah, 59. You'll see $25,620,207 for 2015, and then you'll see the $27,222 for 2014 again. The number right below it is your funded status. So at the end of 15, you had funded that liability of about 81.5% compared to about 8.16%. That's significantly better than the previous year. It's only more than what it was before.
70ish. 71.
70s rings a bell.
It's the low 70s, 71, 72, 73.
It was about, it was 69.1% if you had it in 2013. So you, you increased your funding of your pension by 11%. Once you start dropping below that 70% level, then the revenue agencies can go outside, and the state has a lot of outside agencies. Significant improvements in the overall financial position of the pension plan. And when you look at the county, it has a whole significant improvement from the financial. So any questions?
So we're on a good path.
You're definitely on, on a good path. You've made some significant changes over the last couple of years, probably some major changes over the last couple of years. So, but I think you really laid the ground or put the county on what might happen. Some, we look at things on a historical basis, and now this year, the county would have been really just about break-even. In prior years, when I go back from 2013, all the way back to 2013 and back to 2010, you were losing around $1.3 to $2 million a year. This year, you had a decrease in your net assets, excluding the pension, the extra pension of about $854,000. But within that $854,000, you made your minimum pension contribution, which was over $3 million. When you had those deficits in the prior years, in 2010 through 2013, for example, 2010, you had a deficit in the general fund of $1,330,000. But in order to help fund that deficit, you didn't make your pension contribution that year, your pension contribution was $5.2 million. Had you been making your pension contribution like you should have been, or what we actually said, for 2010, you would have lost a $6.5 million. For 2011, under that same scenario, you had a loss of about $2.1 million. Again, your pension contribution for that year that you did make was $5,791,000. You would have had a loss of $7,900,000. So the fact that you've come a long way, you're making your pension contribution, and you almost broke even for fiscal 2015, is a huge improvement. Plus, when you look at the funded status of your pension, it's significantly improved. When you go out and look at how other entities look at the county, particularly the bond rating agencies, your bond rating was 7.2%. You, you were headed down a half over the last five or 10 years or so. That really was going to decrease the health of county significantly. Over the last two or three or four years, you've really turned that around and changed the direction of the ship. And those outside of the county are now the city and the citizens, just, and that's important. There's a better bonding, better ratings certainly decreases your cost of capital, and also removes the handcuffs of things that the county can do.
Do you want to spend a few minutes on the issue of cash on hand or the fund balance? Any guidelines for us there? That seems to come up as a, we should almost, in some people's thinking, you know, be in a crisis management without any cash. That's one way of operating versus having cash on hand to an extent, should we have that?
Well, there's, there's a couple ways to look at it. From running it on a crisis management standpoint, paycheck to paycheck, you certainly wouldn't want to do that in your own personal lives to the extent that you'd avoid it. So you don't want to do that for county people, particularly when you have responsibility for all of the citizens of the county. And the economy, although not as robust as everyone would hope, is certainly better off than it will be than it was a couple of years ago. So living paycheck to paycheck now, when there has been improvement, would probably lead to significant crisis for the county, if and when, when there is a downturn. When you look at how much should be cash on hand, there's some hard to set. We have some county, we have one county that amazes me. They have, I would say, 85% of their annual budget in cash. That's a little extreme, I'm not suggesting that. But certainly, you want to look at your revenue flows and your fees. You don't collect real estate taxes for the first two and a half months of the year. So you want to at least have that much in, in your reserve. Things that happen that are outside of your control that you can't predict, you want to be prepared with, like the state budget not being answered. 10 years ago, that would never have happened, but it's happened twice in the last six years or so. So those are things that are under your control. So without those reserves, then you run the risk of being in a crisis. And, you know, from that standpoint of having those excess reserves, that again unhandcuffs you and gives you flexibility on what to do. At the end of the year, your general fund had about $100 million in cash. That provides you liquidity to do what you need in the first part of the year. It provides you liquidity when things like the color of the spending budget comes through. If there would be a funding cut of a program that you don't want to, to cut, it allows you the opportunity to continue funding a program until that program is funded out on a more level-based basis. It allows you to look at some options for economic development, too. It gives you, it takes the handcuffs off if you want to allow to do some type of economic development or economic stimulus package. And then the paycheck, the things like that. Anything from our controller or Sally, or my guys?
Yes, I do have a question mark. On page 34, rebateable arbitrage says, as defined in the federal tax code, governments are not permitted to reinvest the proceeds of tax-exempt debt in higher-yielding securities. The liability to the federal government for any excess earnings is known as rebateable arbitrage. Arbitrage rebate payments must be made to the federal government every five years and within 60 days of final maturity. A rebateable arbitrage liability is recognized in all funds, and in the government-wide and proprietary funds, financial statements when incurred and measurable. One of the things that has been presented recently is to borrow money to invest in the stock market. What I'm reading under rebateable arbitrage tells me that that would not be allowed, because all the, anything that would be made from that would go back to the federal government?
Well, probably need a little bit of clarification on the investment in the stock market. It would be for the pension fund, because the county in and of itself, its own funds, would invest in the stock market. But the arbitrage rules in that are a little bit different. The way, the arbitrage rules came about in tax reform act of 1986, and that was when local governments, remember back in the 80s, interest rates were at straighter times. Local governments could go out and borrow money at 8% and invest it, it was 14%. That 6% difference was arbitrage. The federal government caught on to that and said, wait a minute, that extra 6% you are owed back. The rate environment has changed significantly, so you can, you can rather borrow at 2, maybe 2.25%, but you're not going to be able to put that into a positive account as easy as it was after 1986. When you look at borrowing funds, say you went out and you do a bond issue, and you do $20 million for a particular bond issue, and you pay 2.5%. And then you take that money and you put it in your pension plan, and your rate assumption is 7.5%, and you make that 7.5%. The arbitrage rules in that situation don't apply, because once you write that check to the pension, that money is no longer accounted for. That money belongs to the employees and the participants of the program. So it leaves your control, it's untouchable to you, you can't go back. If you wanted to now, you couldn't go to your pension plan and say, you don't want that $10 million contribution we made last year? We really didn't mean that, and we have $2 million back there. So under that scenario, arbitrage won't apply if you would take a bond out to fund your pension.
You know, that doesn't quite make sense to me, because we're still liable for the debt as well?
You are liable for the debt, but it's replacing one debt for another debt. So right now, when you look at your pension fund, you have $25,620,000 of debt due to your pension. You're taking that, let's say you borrow that whole thing, you're taking $25 million, giving it to your pension plan, you no longer owe them, but you owe the bondholders $25 million. It's taking it from one bucket to another.
But there is a hard debt, because it's an amount you must pay back in full, whereby if you were making 10% interest, that amount may come down. And so you would not have that hard debt, debt to repay.
Right, one is going to be a fixed number, if you borrow $25 million, you pay $25 million. With your pension plan, based on the results of your investment portfolio, they may hit it right on the market, 7.5% and you owe $25 million. Or they may, they come in at 6.5%.
Very familiar.
It's a number that's going to function. And this, these numbers next year can be significantly different.
It's important that it identifies that, it specifies the tax-exempt debt, but not all debt is tax-exempt.
If you borrow taxable debt, you can earn any interest rate on that that you can at the market without having to arbitrage. Federal government's getting their cut.
Okay, then my next question would go to pages 40 and 42.
Okay, then my next question would go to pages forty and forty-two where it means numerous policies that the county doesn't have. For instance, limit investment, I think its maturities as a means of managing exposure. The dollars invested with one issuer and the dollars limited in foreign currency risk. Does that become part of the policy within our report or audit that you just did? Is that a separate thing that we have to do?
Which, which?
What guidance would you provide so that we can get those into compliance?
A lot of entities will go into investments over the bank. They'll go into investments over the bank. So they may go into US Treasury notes, they may go into discretionary bills, longer term type of investments. And when you're into those, if you want to get into those and you have that as part of your portfolio, you want to have some guidelines to limit your exposure. So you don't want to go out and put all of your available cash on hand in a ten-year treasury note in today's interest rate environment because eventually, if and when interest rates go up, the value of those treasury notes are going to go down until they get closer to maturity. The excess funds that the county has at this point in time, it was placed in local bank accounts and a certificate of deposit accounts may have some, or they may hold that some investment, quid in investment or in short-term investments. So your risk of exposure, of loss from the value of those investments is very, very minimal, almost nonexistent.
But you're still stating that we should have a written policy. How would we go about accomplishing that? With your guidance or would that come through somebody else?
What I would do is go out to probably County Controllers Association and ask if they have sample investment policies. Get some.
Or seek them perhaps.
The county code also states what, county code, correct?
Yeah. It does, but it doesn't, it doesn't limit the ground. So the next couple bullets indicate what the county code will let you, including just trayeries, insurance obligations, et cetera. But it doesn't say you can only have ten percent US treasuries and they need to mature within a period. So it's getting down to that.
So look for, look for samples from other places.
That's what I would do and customize it based on your risk preference and tolerance. Certainly when you are in a fiduciary capacity, your investment purchase is a good one.
The other question that I had, I only had a little less than twenty-four hours to go through all this, so I may come up with more later, but this is my last one for today. The last paragraph on page thirty-nine, I have questions on the carrying amounts of the county's bank deposits were twenty-two plus million and balances twenty-three plus million, of which two million two hundred thirty-four thousand was covered by the Federal Deposit Insurance Corporation. The remaining amount was exposed to custodial risk because it was uninsured and collateralized with securities held by pledging financial institutions, trust or agent, but not the county's name. In addition, cash and cash equivalents with a carrying amount of over four million dollars were held at brokerage accounts in the county's pension fund. Of the carrying amount, only two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was insured by the Securities Investor Protection Corporation. The county has a petty cash balance, et cetera. This is a finding or not?
No, it's not a finding, it's a, it's a, so Pennsylvania passed something that we referred to as Act Seventy-Two. And what Act Seventy-Two says, the local government can, as part of that mess we're in, we talked about. They invest in bank deposits, and those bank deposits need to be FDIC insured. Since your public funds, if they're not FDIC insured, the bank needs collateralized those. And what that means is if you have a million dollars in the local bank here, you're going to get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of FDIC insurance. That difference between your balance, your million dollars and the two fifty, the bank needs to take their own investment securities and put them in another portfolio so that in the event that the bank would fail, the regulators could come in and liquidate that portfolio and make all the local governments or public entities whole. And that's called collateralization. Where the risk comes in, and what this disclosure related to that is talking about, is those securities that the bank set aside and pledged are still listed in the issue, by the issuer, in that bank's name. So if it's, it's not the bank and they put aside seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to insure collateral, as far as whoever issued that debt thing knows, it's still a security owned by the bank and they don't know that it's pledged. So the risk is that they sell that security or they said they pledged it and it's not there because you're not holding that security yourself or it's not listed in your name. You don't have control over it. That's not uncommon. Some banks will do pledge collateral and specify specific investments for in a local government. But they never take their own securities and list, put them in your name as collateral deposit, as like giving their investment security. So the risk is that those deposit, those securities set aside, when the bank regulators go in to liquidate them are not always there.
Well, can you explain to me, I remember past audits, and this precedes our current regulatory, but where in excess of the FDIC amount was in an account and we were written up as a finding? What is the difference? I don't understand.
Well, the difference was back then when those were written up, those deposits were in a credit union. And that credit union didn't follow Act Seventy-Two and they never took their own investment securities and set them aside as security for words. So as part of the audit process, we get all of your bank accounts, which is probably ninety of them, it's ninety or a hundred, you have a lot of bank accounts. And we send letters out to the banks and we verify that all of your bank accounts back then are listed as public funds and then they have set aside their own investment securities to secure them, collateralize their deposits in the interest of those. You still have deposits at the credit union and at this point in time, they're limited to the library board. And they're under the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So the county doesn't have that.
And I do believe, there was a, there's subsequent to those findings, that there was over two fifty, we contacted the credit union and they are now, they either were collateral, they either were collateralizing or they purchased additional federal insurance or corporate risk. So, different questions?
One last thing, as Mark talks about that we're, about that we're in a much better place after seeing and talking to other counties and seeing how it is. We've talked before, I hate to use Cambridge County as the prime example. Cambridge County is the one who borrowed money, couldn't pay it back and borrowed again. And they actually went to court this year and asked to get their tax rate increased to, I think, twenty-nine point four percent just to give her cover costs. They were looking at the end of last year, as you said, Mark, the living paycheck to paycheck. In December of last year, they weren't sure they could even pay rolling. They were, so we're, I'm not happy, we're in a much better position than in some of the other counties. And one of the other counties in particular, depending on how you looked at what numbers they do, thirty-one percent funded intervention or fifty-four, and their net unfunded was eighty-three million dollars. They're in the same class as we are. We're in a much better position.
You're in a much better position and you're much better on track. You made a commitment to fund your recorded contribution to the pension plan and supported the voting process. Looking back historically, I think you had your, prior to the 2016, your latest, largest tax increase out of the years, smaller than that, was probably between 2008 and 2009. That looked like it was around twenty-five, thirty percent, somewhere in that range here. It looks like you went with the other one in that, so 2009 to 2016, it's a seven-year period. You had a twenty-five percent jump. Looking at it from a snapshot of that, one year to one year, yeah, it's a, it's a big jump. But when you take it and have it jumailed over the seven years since the previous one, it's, it makes a little bit of difference.
I would like to say, and this relates directly, Mark, to you, and I've said this at least one year prior to this one. You do an excellent job of obviously preparing the audit and you also, your presentation here makes it very understandable for those of us that are not auditors and not actuaries and in that realm of financial understanding. And I would, I would like to say that I'm very proud of what this board has done in four years or a little over four years. And a portion of that accomplishment, I think, can be credited, at least in my decision-making, in your contributions here on these annual meetings and discussions between these annual reports. So I, I think our board should be proud of what we have accomplished in the positioning of the county financially. And I want to thank you for helping us achieve that.
Thank you very much, it's very kind of you, I very appreciate it. And I echo your sentiments that you've come a long way in four years. I felt that, and a point concerned in there, which is not a good opinion to have. Your bond rating had decreased and recovered, but then your pension contributions haven't been made on a regular basis from 2002 forward. And you've rated that ship and turned all of those major issues around. You've made significant progress and improvement. And I really think that you've made the foundation and basis for the county to really move forward and open the door for some options to do things that you didn't have the resources to do in advance.
And as you, as you said, these things were not popular. They're, we expended political capital to accomplish this and that was especially noted with the significant tax increase. But I feel that if a governing body like this is not willing to place themselves personally in a position that may be dangerous politically to right the county's financial situation and ultimately benefit all of the property owners in this county because that's the only source of revenue that we have. And even, it's very difficult for someone out there that's seen their property, county property tax increased by thirty-two percent to look at it and say, oh, those county commissioners are really doing me a favor. But in reality, we did.
Right, it's, it's, without having the background in the detail, it's harder for citizens to take that long-term look and that long-term approach and see how it impacts the county. Or that historical look to see where we came from and what the impact and effects were. Realistically, your deficits in your general fund, as I said before, were significantly understated because you hadn't been making your pension contributions. You would have run deficits in the six, seven, eight million dollars had you been doing more this time. The decisions made back then really took that short-term approach. What the decisions you're making now, I think, are a much longer term and have a longer lasting impact on the county than they are.
I think the other thing that we should feel proud of accomplishment, if we compare Leavenin County to the state government and the federal government, we're the only ones that are doing what needs to be done.
We need a motion to accept. All right, nothing else, thank you gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Let's put the report cards.
Just two more items, if I could, for some requests for hotel tax grants. Two entities, first being from the Community of Leaven, Community of Leaven Association. They are holding their seventh annual music and beer festival on Eighth Street coming up on September twenty-fourth. And they are asking for, they have a total, a total budget for the, for the festival, twenty-three thousand dollars. They're asking for a grant of three thousand dollars toward the, toward that budget to assist in promoting, promoting the event outside of Leavenin County. And I know you each have a copy of that application, a bit of a chance to look over it. You did fund this one time before, at least one time, maybe twice before, sorry. The last one, you funded it at fifteen hundred dollars in twenty fifteen. And the request is for three thousand dollars, so I'd ask for your consideration of that.
Is there a motion? Do you want a motion or you couldn't, we do some pre-discussions? My intention would not be to make a motion for the amount requested.
Whatever you prefer, do you want to just put your motion over here?
Is that acceptable, Commissioner?
Oh, I don't care.
Well, I, I will make a motion to give from the Hotel Tax Fund fifteen hundred dollars to CLA for their event. And the Commissioner, please, would second it, I'll speak to why I made that motion.
I am trying to be consistent from one year to the next because of the fact that we fund drug and alcohol and it includes advertising for beer, I feel that's a conflict of interest.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
The reason I made the motion for fifteen hundred dollars is that's what we did last year. And as a means of explaining my position, the Chris Kindle Market, we funded them several times now at the rate of a thousand dollars and each year they come back and ask for two thousand. And these are events that I think we should support, but I think our support should be in the form of seed money to get the thing rolling. And obviously, the intent of this type of activity should be to make a profit or at least break even and they should be responsible for increasing the positive cash flow for these events. So I don't think they should look to the county and the hotel tax to increase funding to an event like this each year that is a for-pay, people pay to attend this and so on. So that's why I'm suggesting the fifteen hundred.
Any other questions or discussion? We have a fifteen hundred dollar grant on the floor for the Community of Leavenin Association. If there's nothing further, if I want a favorite motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
It's two to one in support of the motion.
Okay, the second one is from Historic Shakers Town Incorporated. And one thing I forgot to mention to you, that was since you were, since the adoption of the new ordinance, which took the hotel tax to five percent, one of the changes also included in that ordinance was a twenty-five percent match. percent match to these grants, so that these entities, you know, have something in the game, so to speak, and they can do that either in cash or in kind. The CLA had theirs in cash, since they had other pledges toward the, toward the festival. Historic Shakers Town, and again, you had a copy of this, they would like a grant for twelve thousand five hundred dollars, and they intend to do two things with that money. One is to develop a promotional video for Historic Shakers Town at a cost of nine thousand dollars, and this would be done professionally, they would then make DVD copies of it to be made available for tourists of use, you know, getting the word out about Historic Shakers Town and the events they have there. And they also have a piece of artwork that is significant to the history of Shakers Town that they would like to preserve and put on display, and they would have that done professionally. I think they include all the documents in there, the estimates, who would be doing that, I think it'd be done in the Philadelphia area, and the cost of that would be three thousand five hundred dollars. So that's a total request of twelve thousand five hundred. They are offering their match in kind, most of which would be in contribution from the volunteers toward the production of the video, some of whom are volunteers to Historic Shakers Town and do that sort of business on their own, for-profit, but are willing to give their time toward the production of it. And that way, they are meeting twenty-five percent in kind requirement, so.
I'll make a motion to fund the Shakers Town project, as presented.
I'll second it. It's been a consecutive, any question or comment?
I think it's a very worthwhile project, and certainly, they do draw lots of people to their festivals, like Cherry Festival, Apple Festival, things like that.
Do you have any specifics on the art?
Yeah. I can give you a copy of it, if you want to go over it, but quickly, it's a...
Ferdinand Brader?
Yeah, first, the legacy of Ferdinand Brader, nineteenth-century drawings of the Ohio landscape. There are currently forty of these types of drawings out there, and one, one of them is in the possession of Historic Shakers Town, but it's, it's, has some minor damage to it, it's dirty, so on, so they're, they're proposing to send that to the Conservation Center for Art and Historic Artifacts, and I said, as I said, have it repaired, have it, you know, done, so that it remains historically significant and not damaging and anything, make the repairs to the minor tears, clean it up, you know, preservation.
On favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Both same signs, so moved.
And this is the last item, Michelle asked if, and me as well asked, we just have a little bit of time, if you have any other session, or meeting, or if there's any, still a lot of things left, I forgot to go to answer that.
Okay. I just wanted to, you know, ask if the board would entertain a letter of support, not financial support, but just a support for the two-on-one effort that the United Way is getting involved in there, trying to raise money between now and the end of the year to fund that. And so I think it's, you know, well-validated that it's going to happen, and we, if we can show that we are, I think it's a credible, worthy project, I think that would help them in their fundraising efforts. So I'd like to have a letter from the board supporting that, so that they can have timely block to get their money raised.
I'll make a motion that we have the county administrator draft a letter in support of the two-one, one effort by the United Way.
I respectfully request for some more time. I did have a call from Kenny. We were in session yesterday, had another meeting last night, and preparation this morning for this meeting, I need some time to get back to him, please.
As to whether you would support this, that they're going to do it?
I don't know what he's going to talk to me about, so I would respectfully ask for some more time. And plus, I, I had, I'm doing a compilation from other counties as well.
Well, I'm, I'm prepared to second the motion, in the interest of time for them, so that they have support from the county to be there fundraising, I think that's a, so that they have support.
Would you have a conflict of interest there?
Conflict of interest, I mean, you'd have to define it in a more way.
If you have relatives that work there?
I have relatives that work for United Way, that supporting a two-on-one would be a conflict of interest.
I'm, I'm just asking.
What's the, I guess I'd have to ask why you're asking?
Well, the same discussion we had yesterday, she'll use any way you're embarrassing us that you can, that's, that's our goal, so.
No.
I'll call for a question.
All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. opposed?
I'd like to abstain at this point because I don't have all my information.
So two to one in support of the efforts of United Way to have a two-on-one fundraising effort to start that by the first of two thousand seventeen. Okay. Anything else, Jim?
You have time afterward?
Yep. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Senator...
John, would you like a copy?